All right, we'll call the court to order. Declare that there's a quorum. I'll have Ms. Jento open us with a word of prayer.
Father, we just come to you today thanking you for all the blessings that you give to us and that you bestow on our county. We give you praise, dear Lord, and for just protecting us through each and every day. I pray, dear Lord, for our county. I pray that you will send refreshing rain, dear Lord, on our county. Our lands, dear Lord, are so dry that you've given us. I pray, dear Lord, for this meeting. I pray blessings upon it. I pray that decisions here will be made will be with your forethoughts, dear Lord, and only clarity from you. I ask, dear Lord, blessings upon our nation. I pray, dear Lord, that the administration will look to you for guidance and follow the will that you have laid out for them. I thank you, dear Lord, for our service, men and women. I ask, dear Lord, protection over them, and I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Let's. To flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Jento.
All right. I have the regular minutes from July the 14th, special minutes from the 17th and 21st. I do have a personnel report. I have certification of additional revenue. I have amended amendments, changes by fund, investment report, June of 2025. I have an unreconciled auditor's report, July 22nd, 2025. I have a treasurer's financial report of June of 2025. I have departmental financial reports of DMV. I have eight sets of bills, claims, and accounts. On cybersecurity, I have Kim Cherry. On purchasing acknowledgements, I have Carrie Bachel, Brooklyn Huffman, Brenda Miller, and Joe Moran. And that's it, sir.
Okay. Ms. Key.
Um, do we want to talk about the investment report notes coming up? So this was as of June 30th. We have one $250,000 CD in First Financial Bank. The $95,821 CD is our OPEC CD, so we can't touch that. We have a $250,000 CD in Shirts, $250,000 in Prosperity. We have $818,266 in the money market at First National Bank, which talks falls. $589,755.79 in Texas class, $602,606.67 in Techpool Prime, $380,440.8 in Techpool. All those are general fund monies. And Texas class for ARCA is $305,385.6. I looked in the bank today. In general fund checking, we have $313,000. We're going to need money before the end of the fiscal year. Loretta and I discussed, we're probably going to need to redeem the CD that matures in August at First Financial Bank, and we also discussed moving money out of Techpool. What are y'all's thoughts?
And Texas class.
And Texas class, I apologize.
So redeeming, ending in five eight five cents?
Yes, ma'am.
And move money from Texas class?
And Techpool.
How much?
We haven't discussed that yet. Loretta and I wrote out of the office last week. We're at $313,000 now. We probably need more money. Let's see. We look at the bills. Now, I would say, number one, $130,000 per payroll-ish, let's say $150,000 for payroll. And depending on what bills come in.
When, when, of course, I don't have the, I got the July statement Loretta sent us. When are we going to move the money from Roden Bridge back to checking? Shows we got a million dollars in Roden Bridge, and I want your grant reimbursed.
I've moved everything from grants to Roden Bridge that was due. I have nothing in grants funds.
Uh, general ledger, checking, Roden Bridge. As of yesterday,
In general ledger?
In Roden Bridge. Gen- general ledger, yes. Is it?
I believe so. I briefly looked at some of them.
So what you've got in front of you, I estimated payrolls for general fund and Roden Bridge for the remaining portion of the year, and we have five and a half payrolls left in fiscal year '25. And these are rough numbers off of the July 25th payroll. That's what I based it on. So estimated remaining payroll general fund is $1,544,500. On the second page, it shows the variance favorable column. So we're over on our projected revenues, and a lot of that is fines and fees. They, we really collect it this year. The expense, it shows there's $3,351,667.35 remaining to be paid out. We never do 100%, so even if we estimate 80%, it's around 2.7 million. So I think before the end of the fiscal year, we will need to redeem that CD ending in five eight five six.
Which is which one?
The first one on the investment report.
It ended in what?
Five eight five six. It's the very first CD.
Judge, is this true?
This one.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was looking at what you've given us.
And we don't want to close our Techpool and Texas class, but we're going to have to take money out of those. And we've even discussed taking money out of Techpool Prime and the money markets with First National Bank, which talk. But right now, the main thing we need to do is take out of Texas class and Techpool to start covering payrolls and bills.
So I'm still back to if there's $600,000 in Roden Bridge, which is not all Roden Bridge. It's part of the reimbursement from the grant.
Well.
Well, well.
All of that went into Roden Bridge, yes.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, is that why aren't we moving it back to the general ledger account?
Well, there's still a million dollars in projected expense for the year in Roden Bridge.
Mine says projected $310,000.
Oh, that's just payroll. On, on the second page, on the statement of revenue and expense, Roden Bridge. In the variance, the remaining expenditures are $1,050,882.13.
For the grants, everything we've been reimbursed has gone back into Roden Bridge because it was paid out of Roden Bridge.
Right, but it was transferred from general fund.
It was transferred from grants fund.
Right, but did the, but originally paid.
The initial.
And the initial transfers were from general.
Did we ever, I'd have to look at that. I don't think we ever actually transferred money for the grant. Dollars.
Well, we did that because the equipment, we had loans.
Right.
And as soon as we got that money, we entered, entered grant, we transferred it to Roden Bridge. And then the other was just the, we got the payroll reimbursed, reimbursing back into Roden Bridge. And we'll just be adding these.
Yeah, but the payroll and stuff that we did for the grant didn't come out of, wasn't obligated out of our stuff. So if we're paying that, it's coming out of general fund.
No, it's coming out of Roden Bridge. The whole grant budget is in Roden Bridge.
Well, I understand that, but we didn't have no balance, fund balance in Roden Bridge. So if you dedicated fund balance, it come from the general fund side of everything.
Yes, but I, I think there was enough money in Roden Bridge that we didn't, because we did that $449,000 emergency.
Right.
But there was enough fund balance in Roden Bridge that I don't think we moved it. So right now for payroll, I'm waiting for about $45,000, and I have $72,000 to submit. And then when I get, I think I'm missing three records for three payrolls right now.
You're missing records for three payrolls?
From the treasurer's office, I get all the payroll records to submit for reimbursement. I, I just don't have them yet. They're not missing. I don't have them yet.
You're waiting for Lisa to make copies instead of getting it from the flash card that was sent to your office.
So that's three pay periods, is what you're saying?
Yes, three pay periods. So it's the last one in June and the two Julys that I need records on.
Okay. And how much is that?
About.
I mean, I know, I know the treasurer, I'm not calling anybody out on that, but is there, is there a reason we're three payrolls behind on getting that submitted, or?
No, it takes a while to get all the records together afterwards.
Bank statements.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we wait on bank statements. It takes a while.
I'm just trying to figure out how to streamline the process because we've, there's not an easy way.
No, there's not. There's all the records and having to produce records, and with budget going on right now, it's, it's just been tough trying to get it all done. So we should catch up very soon.
Well, we, we can discuss about that after we do that, but that, obviously, if, if part of the reason that we're straining on our budget is because of the reimbursement process.
No, that, that is not.
Well, I know, but you, we can't.
I billed the last five RFRs, I think on July 8th, so we should get reimbursement quickly for those, and then I'll get the other ones in.
Okay. Christina, was that your? And what were? I know I saw that.
Are you looking for her investment report?
Yeah. All right, thank you. Trying to find it on the email. Wish we had a little.
First money?
Yeah. I would just like, maybe that's something I'll sit down with Ginger about is it, you know, is renaming these PR app, PR gross wages to actually what the budget, what the agenda item is.
Those are bills.
I know.
So maybe you put bills in front of it.
Yeah, or something. I mean, just, just so that, because we get stuff from you, we get stuff from Christina, we get stuff, obviously, just putting stuff. Okay. So what's the, what's the plan of action? Is this the action the court needs to take today, this morning, or is this?
Well, we have
We have authority to move money.
To move money, but we're just letting, we're informing the court.
Okay. Any other questions? Loretta or Christina?
No.
All right. Are we ready to approve the consent agenda?
As y'all know, we lost Jamie off our board that served for 20 years, so we'd like to replace, we can't replace her. We'd like to add another member of Janet Winkler to our, we feel like she'd be a very good asset.
All right, I mean, certainly, we certainly trust your judgment on that deal, so I would entertain a motion to to have Janet Winkler appointed to the child welfare board. Most of them, Mr. Maxwell, second by Mr. Wilson, all those who bear to say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all have a great day. Thank you for all you do.
Well, you can come back and buy and see sometime when you're not asking for something.
Well, not at, well, you know, I'm usually asking for something.
I was here at the last meeting. I told you I had his number, but you didn't want the number. You wanted Mr. Clark or a letter from him. So he's come in today, and so that way he could. Actually, even last year we started, we just didn't know which direction to go, so. Sixty-foot easement. The right of way is, is sixty-foot, so it'd be thirty-foot for each side.
But I think the court wanted documentation that he doesn't have any issues with that in writing.
Right, and.
And whoever prepares your quick claim D can do that. Typically, title company or lawyer can.
Right. We just need to know if.
Right, second by Mr. Maxwell, who bears aye. Both same sign.
Do you go forward?
We'll, we'll just bring this quick claim D to your thirty feet. Okay, and then that's, that's all we should have to cut out. We'll vacate it after that. Both of you, both, that, both of you need a quick claim D for that thirty feet. Okay, now, it's all right, since it's already here before today. He's living in Alabama now. Would it be okay if I just bring in a quick claim letter in, or does he have to physically bring it in to you?
Whenever, whenever the surveyor's going to give you that says.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's not saying that he's not here.
It'll be a quick claim D where he will sign before.
Yes, sir. I'm good on here, ma'am.
Uh, let's go to the, this doesn't consider allowing the extension office to have a surveyor's office space when they've moved the adjacent building to allow the extension office. Room for meetings and storage, Mr. Cummings.
We are experiencing growing pains with our extension program, especially the four age program. I'm not sure what year we moved from the basement here over to the annex building. I've got some pictures if y'all want to see them. If you don't, that's fine, too.
Are you in them?
I don't, I don't do pictures.
Just check. You can, yeah.
So what has happened is we've gone from about fifty-four age kids to about a hundred and twenty-four age kids right now. And probably, yeah, exactly. And along with that comes a lot of stuff that we need for these contests. Contest, there are pictures here. We've got what we call our sewing room. We've got, I think it's twelve sewing machines that these kids use making different things and stuff like that. You gotta put those somewhere. The biggest problem we've got is what we call food channels, and it's.
This is the back room of your house.
No, it's worse than that.
I remember I said it before this.
But these, these contests, we supply the extension office. And we've literally, there's some pictures here. We've got stuff stacked up against the ceiling in our offices that we've got. Another area is on the third floor of the annex, is there's a closet about eight or 10 feet wide and about 15 feet deep that is basically the brain to that building as far as electronics. All electrical goes through there, most all of the phone stuff, parts that's still working, our phones over there, and then all the internet is there. It's over in a corner of this room that we've got that is full of wagons and sewing machines and cooking stuff and all that. Every time Goldsmith shows up and needs work on that building, we clean that room out, and we literally put it out in front of Cora's desk until that's resolved. Sometimes that's two or three days before we've got people coming walking into our office. We started out with, let's see, four TIA members, and what the TIA Association is, is our SEH agent, he's got these ladies that basically are retired schoolteachers that help, help her with.
Breakfast at the courthouse.
Breakfast at the courthouse. All of them, I'm fixing to this fall start master gardeners, you know, and parts of gardening, and they come back and they get hours. They do the community just like I do. If some, if you've got problems with your peach tree, I've got somebody that I can call and say, hey, does hold them. Paperwork and a lot of equipment, if you will, that's going to be coming into that office, too.
So how much is they paying us for the additional rent on the storage that you're asking for?
Whatever my budget is, exactly. That's the problem.
That didn't help us any.
Exactly, there's no money there. What I'm wanting to try to do and run by y'all, see if we can maybe work something out, is Williamson Surveyors basically got half of the third floor, our extension office, the other half. They have bought the adjacent building and are in a process of moving over there.
You said, and I, Ginger and I were talking about, which building are they, they moving into?
It's the old Perry Insurance Building, the little short building between, between the annex and the TIA.
Okay, okay.
Right, right. They're just moving next door.
KRP.
KRP, exactly. Right, they're moving over there. And so what I want to try to do is basically the extension office will come to the third floor. One problem we've got, some of those pictures, I've got one meeting room, kind of an L-shaped room in there. Really, it, it has served well up to this point, but we're, we're outgrowing this thing. And down at Lynn and Gail's office at the other end of the floor, there's a room, it's not quite as big as this. That is the main thing I want. We need somewhere, our TIA ladies can no longer meet there. Our master gardeners are not going to be able to meet there. There's our agent operating for that. So if we can get that part of the floor, that's what I want to do.
You told me it was how it made it.
Well, here's the goal.
They got mine out there, didn't they?
The goal part, it's not going to cost anything. We're not going to, we're not wanting to go in there and remodel the built, the rooms or anything like that. We had an air conditioner down there by Lynn and Gail's that the condensate pump didn't work, and it got out on some carpet. We're probably going to, they're going to pull that carpet up, or I'm going to help Lynn do it anyway. If we can put a flooring in there, fine. If we can't, that's fine as well. The only other thing that we think we may need to do something with, and it's not a bill breaker to us either, is our internet won't reach down there. I'm waiting to hear back from Goldsmith about, can they run something down the hall or give us another router or something?
So we're going to put some kind of extender on.
Yeah, exactly. And Cora carried her computer down there the other day, and her computer, our internet basically quits at the end of our hall meetings that we do, like the screw arm deal we did the other day. Worst part of one, I think it was. I had people standing up against the wall down there. I got nowhere else to go with them, you know? And we all know the.
I heard you look really creeped that screw arm costume, though.
Oh, it was cool. That, we don't know where that was at, but that has got a lot of our producers, homeowners, everybody else up in there. And as I hear something, I will be bringing that to y'all for court here, what's going on.
You got to keep me, keep me informed.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, a lot of us got a few cats, whatever, I mean, that's, that's mostly coming our way, but. But I just wanted, I just wanted to ask, would there be a chance of the extension office, once Lynn and Gail move, and we don't, and I don't know if y'all have someone else looking to go in that office space down there or not.
Well, there's always a chance, TJ. There's always a chance.
That's, well, that's what I want, is a chance.
Any, any questions, or think the program stalls because we don't have the, the room?
Yeah.
Well, we had, the first year I was here, we did one summer camp, if you will, day camp, kind of deal with the kids. I had 11 kids there. The last two or three weeks, we've done three camps, and we had to cut it off between kids for each camp. We just flat don't have the room to do it in there. Or our other, our other choice, and I, I, there's another way of doing this, is move everything downstairs again into the ladies' center between the meetings that happen down there and take everything back upstairs. So we're trying to avoid moving stuff, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's easier to move stuff across the hall.
Exactly.
Or down the hall, then just try to move it up and down upstairs.
So is this the entire surveying office for portion?
It'd be the entire office, right.
Yeah.
And I don't have a floor plan of what it looks like, but right now, when you come up the elevator, you hit a dead end wall there, and Lynn and Gail are using sort of a doorway that we lock going into our extension office. Beyond that door coming down that hall, Lynn and Gail are using one of those offices for storage right now. But other than that, the rest of theirs is all in that hallway and accesses from the elevator up there. What I'm, what I'm.
So they don't really have half the floor. They got less than half.
No, because that's a pretty good sized room, too.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, better here, too.
I'll wait.
Your question, Mr. Ryan, second by Mr. Maxwell, who bears aye. Both same sign, both carry.
Gentlemen, I appreciate it.
You ready to move in, just keep.
I'll put four to work now.
Keep me. Yes, keep me, keep me posted on that, though, and the screw, screw.
I'll do that. I'll go to a meeting wing Steve where we're supposed to have some of the vet team there, and hopefully try and help something there, and I'll.
Get back with y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
After discussing the center, Internet, Med Care Network membership, the payroll deduction, we got the only agreement, the county's county of air med care.
This is the same as it's been, although you were adding international, the option, but we used to add international. Finding home also has been reviewed by the DSA's office. This is a payroll deduction if the employee.
Okay, entertain a motion?
And then allow you to sign.
Yeah. Motion, motion by Mr. Maxwell, second by Mr. Maxwell, who bears aye. Both same sign, motion carries. Both same side, motion carries.
Initial, page of the judge.
And this is the one we can't fill in the fees and payment until after opening a little bit.
Budget adjustments, those that you made mine out of rich destruction. I wondered why it didn't.
Hey, Shelby.
Are you sure you don't need it now?
Okay. Mr. Coleman, you're on. He'll be able to mute himself.
That was Helen, you spoke to.
Yeah, she's muted. Okay, there were some questions that we had and thank you for the Forest Service being here today. We didn't know what you guys were, come in mass, but we'll, we'll take you wherever we can.
Yeah, the locals.
Can I tell it to somebody, I'm not Judge Field?
When did you drop that sign there?
Yeah.
Can't remember what his looks like, or what sign it's on. Okay, Phil, you, uh.
I've got some questions and things along, so call Brian. Y'all didn't send many questions or any questions really, just the, hey, we talked about the budget and things. I wrote some notes and sent it in behind Gary, so they come down to answer some questions for you and things like that. So that's why they're here. This is Miss Hyland, she's the director of the.
Coordinator.
Coordinator.
I think we're trying to figure out where we stand and what we need to go forward with. And the reason being is, is with the, and it's basically with the software stuff. We don't want to get too far behind on the data entry side of it. And what we're trying to figure out is if it's been, been more beneficial for us to buy or purchase the G S I systems and put somebody on staff to do the data entry. My concern if we, and Helen's listening, and Helen's listening to me on meetings too, we don't want to offside our data, we've had this problem before. So if we hire a third party vendor through a contractor, that data's not ours. So when, if something happens, we don't own that data, we have to get it from them or start over. So we would rather look at doing the data entry and purchasing the G S I stuff ourselves as the. And I understand, there's been questions about the grant and to give y'all a little heads up on the grant. We, we hired, Light Lane for to hire the right grant, a kid named Tyler wrote the grant and sometime between grant and grant getting approved, Tyler quit. So we kind of didn't know what got submitted to the honest, which we're, I mean, we ain't got a problem with forward facing that we're doing right now and trying to get this done. But we need some direction on the data entry side of it so that we know what we need to have in place. And we don't get January and the light bulbs goes off with the old crap moment, that we've got to try to come back up with all this stuff.
Sure. From the state and the federal perspective, the things that we are most concerned with are listed on the accomplishment of the, this is the original application and in the subsequent agreement that Bruce and Brian had earlier this year. So is, is the work being done that was laid out to be done? Now, in the project budget explanation, there is the line item that you're referring to. Part of the contractual line item is for the project management tracking, reporting and compliance with all the grant requirements. So logistically, what would need to be done to move, and anytime there's movement more than ten percent from one line item budget category to another, we just have to do something that now you're very familiar with is just. So it, not, not future applications, but go online and look at all of the reports that got put in by everybody last year. You can see all the different pages, all the different categories. Basically, it's gonna come down to what sort of work have you done in the last year to go towards, sort of work have you done in the last year to go towards the accomplishments that were laid out, for the accomplishments that were laid out. And obviously on yours end, y'all, it's a lot easier to go up at the end of the year and say, you did this many miles of work, you did this many acres, you did this many outreach programs, you did this many whatevers, if you already have those numbers in a nice database somewhere to be copied over. So having to tabulate it in December.
Well, and I guess, my, my question was, was on the, was on the. It's supposed to be set aside for the.
Yeah, so there's, there's, you have one point two million for contractual, some of that is the tracking system. And another is for what has been labeled a hazard mitigation method. And so you just have to define that more, really look into what the approximates were within the budget. Yeah, within that one point two million dollars. And some of that was for the tracking, reporting and compliance.
If I might just for a minute to clarify that. If you guys know. Need somebody to touch that back and convert it into a reportable G I S layer. That G I S layer is what needs to go into CARP and your end. It becomes kind of the baseline layer of the G I S system that comes with the, the slot of our end. Through the life of the grant, all of that cost is covered under that one point two million. Right, the past that are ten is, they'd be.
Yeah, Kevin.
You'll get that W information at that point. So that information will be current to the day of the end of the grant, right? So the, y'all, we know there, so it's kind of considered to continue to keep that program operable, up to date over time. And I figure out on the county's. That's the overall thing. And the, the. Part of the issue is that it's clearly our intent to put together one management tool that serves both y'all and the partner cities on this sister grant here. That is, that is only complicated by the, you know, the time to get Cisco, Eastland, Ranger to essentially make that decision of how are they gonna track those data points of work, either through an I Works program or through some other P A, so. I know, well, what I think I know is that Cisco is on board using that I Works program. I believe Ranger is, Eastland is an open question.
Well, so that, whatever Cisco, Ranger, Eastland agrees to, remember there, there was one application, so it all needs to be the same, even though it's representing multiple cities.
So that one, yeah, one system can come in and kind of serve the county and whole.
Your, your application.
Move forward, so. I, I hear y'all about not wanting kind of that G I S failed information that y'all have gathered over time to be not accessible to the, I don't see that risk. At a minimum, at the end of the contract, it'll be, it'll be current to the day of the end of the contract.
Yeah, but here's the thing, Kevin, you can't sign, or Lanford can't sign a contract on behalf of us. It has to come before us here to sign.
I understand that, I do understand that.
So.
We had, we had anticipated by the end of June, we would be bringing this package to, we did not anticipate the kind of the. Online, it would take to figure out how the partner cities or control plans are, are intended to move forward.
Kevin, can I, can I stop you?
But clearly think by early next month, people know that. I, you know, we, we, we've tracked that load and, and Bill's been very good, very good about sending forward those reports out of I Works, so we know what those look like. And at this point, we don't see that backlog being insurmountable. But as you guys know, really Cisco, maybe you don't, really Cisco is the only one of the three partner cities that's actually in the field performing work. The other, Eastland is, they have started now, that they have equipment on hand. I'm sorry, Ranger may have started now that they've got equipment on hand, Eastland is still in the kind of equipment procurement world of the grant.
Kevin Anthony's sitting here, he's in, he's in the meeting with us.
That's also a separate, right, so the, the cities, Kevin, are completely separate contracts than the room that we're sitting in right now.
I understand.
So whatever's happening at the city level.
Right.
Whatever happens at the city level, obviously, we, we don't want to ignore what's going on with the cities, because we do want a partnership. But at the end of the day, my recollection of this whole process was, is that in March or April or whatever, we were gonna have some type of a program. And now, the next thing I hear is that we don't have a program. And then when we come up with a program, now it's, well, we're trying to figure out how to, how to negotiate all of that. So I guess I'm, I'm, I've got some questions about the timeline and what's jammed up the timeline. Because if I'm hearing what you're saying, you're holding up the county because of what the cities are doing. And that's two separate grants, maybe the same company managing it, but those are two separate grants.
Oh, yes, sir, I, so, so, right, right, and we made a baseline assumption here, right, two fold, one is that the, the system, that overall recording system is best served if it, if it includes our county, y'all and your sister cities.
That was an, that was an assumption that length.
And then over the long, over the long term, over the long term, baseline judge, Wildfire, that pair, who's in lines are, and the threats are county wide. And so a system that looks at those from a county wide point of view is the best system in place.
So that, that may be.
Part of that assumption is that, that they did like to just wrap that last thing up.
I, I would love for you to wrap that up.
The second part of that is, we don't anticipate this system costing one point two million dollars. So there will be a return back to the county of that money for, you know, to kind of work with Forest Service on the best possible use of.
Right.
And in the bottom line, if we stick with the plan of one system that incorporates both entities and that can be, you know, matched to the delivery and the information that the Forest Service needs, it'll be cheaper for both to do that and more functional over the long term. So if we need to revisit that assumption, we'll move forward with this account. I don't. Yeah, I think those two assumptions are still sound.
Well, first, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, you, you finish that off.
Mr. Coleman, Mr. Coleman, first off, the assumption that you're ma, that you made was what was, what was most beneficial for Lanford, not for what was most beneficial for Eastland County. When you start talking about, hey, it'd be great if we could sit there and get one program that fits, fits both, both scenarios, that's fine, except that's an assumption that you're making that benefits you. What I need is an assumption that's based on what's best for Eastland County, because that's who I'm representing. So I, again, I'd like to know.
I think we can win, we, we can win both sides of this.
Mute him.
Right, I, I agree, I agree, and we, we won't put the interest of.
I don't care if Helen's not gonna do that. The, the thing is, is we can buy the top of the line, Arc G S I, that, that I Work said would do everything that we needed to do for seven thousand dollars. And, and there's an app that Jeff already knows how to use, put on the phone that he tracked for the Forest Service when he was down here fighting fires, that he can do all that data mapping right there on his phone and, and have it ready to go. It's our system, it's our data. No, it's a separate, but see, it's the same thing though, like we talked about, the Jack, if we, the county buys a system, the sheriff's office can use it too, like Jason was talking about with this mapping stuff.
I read briefly over the DARP website, they don't even need a G I S system. They can take a K L M file that you can make up a Google Earth and then you just enter in your hours and your costs and stuff like that, it's, it's not super complicated, they're not asking for a lot.
And that's, that I Works three thousand ticket we just paid for I Works was a plan that Kevin said we needed to make this G I S stuff work.
And it's true.
And it's working, I mean, we, yeah, we did need it for the first, for the Forest Service tracking, further stuff. But on this other deal, there's no sense in us spending half a million dollars for a program that they come up with. And in the beginning of all these meetings that we had about this program, he said Helen was gonna put in all the stuff for us and it would, I mean, that'd just be covered under the deal. Then the other days, or a month or so ago, he said he'd have to figure out how much they were gonna charge us for Helen to put it in. And when we had that meeting, what, last week with them, I Works was ready to start putting in the stuff, but.
I Works, they need G I S, they need a shape file.
Helen said it would be about another month to two months before.
Well, I don't think we need to wait on something for Lanford to come up with, that there's a system already out there.
And that's, that's.
It's Arc.
And G N.
Arc, A R C and G I S.
And that's the, that's the email that I sent Brian a while back, saying, hey, we're tired of this deal.
She probably got the app on her phone.
About every single one of y'all's got it on their phone.
That, that was the deal where he said, you know, we could break the contract, we'd come up with another contract, but at this time, you know, see what Lanford has.
Well, it doesn't appear, and, and I guess maybe we need to sit there and do a.
Well, that was about a month ago or something.
An in-depth dive onto this deal on where that one point two million dollars is gonna be spent at, because we don't need. spent at because we don't need, we don't need, obviously, we don't need that much money.
And it's budget.
And I'm a little concerned that we're, that we're in July, end of July, and I'm being told.
That's at the end of September, probably.
Yeah.
And you were with us.
So, why am I waiting until the end of September for something that we already, we already have this function?
Well, I just think for us to buy a program like that, that's going to benefit for everybody, it makes more sense for us to do it than to off-site all of our information and then have something fall through the cracks where we can't either get it back or we have to buy it back, we have to hire Bill to come in and convert it to something else or.
And to know, it would, so if you buy software yourself, it does change the budget category from contractual or to supply. But to maybe state the obvious, but to say it out loud, federal government does not care if you spend less than what you were given as long as the objectives are being met. So.
Yeah.
And the sheriff could use this too.
Honestly, we need that contractual for operating expenditures that weren't planned. So, I hope we've got other places we need that, right?
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's how we, unless I hear something different from, a different, more.
More muted now too.
More realistic goals.
You're not, I'm tired of talking in circles.
Yeah, no, that's exactly right. Now, where are we at on the DARP thing? I mean, when does that mandatory, when does that mandatory reporting start hitting us?
It's once a year at the end of the calendar. You're going to double check with the person who.
So, it's, so it's open up on the first of every year and it's due by March 31st of every year.
Thank you, Ryan. And you can make, you can make interim reports. So, it's not only once a year.
Yeah, that's what we were talking about, instead of waiting until the very end to try to data entry everything, do it little at a time so you're not sitting there with that over amount of paper going, oh, crap.
That's the email that I sent him, saying, hey, if you don't want to do it, tell us to do it, you know, give us whatever so we can do it because we're not going to be able to go back and give you a whole year's worth of stuff after we've been sending it to you all along.
I would rather, go ahead.
I was going to say, the first DARP report actually already was submitted just because last year was technically the first since that's when we were awarded this grant. But it was pretty much, you know, it was expected in the moment.
Yeah, well, I'd rather, I'd rather, and this is me personally, I'd rather see us submitting that on a quarterly basis so that we're not upside down come the first of the year. It's like, you know, at the end of the year, I'm going to, you know, reconcile my checkbook.
Yeah, well, like Shelby said, the last one, he wanted everything in three days and then there was no progress made, so. Yeah, that was putting it off on us to get it to him at the last minute when we'd been giving it to him the whole year. And every time we send in the I-Work stuff, the copying Brian and him, I mean, he goes to him and will copy Brian and some of the other stuff before, like with payroll stuff, and I know that was people and y'all was a part of moving around, but Kevin wasn't sending everything to Brian. And so, now Loretta, whenever she sends everything to Kevin, copies Brian too. So, they know and it's not a breakdown of communication between us and the Forest and Service or anything. It's a breakdown between Kevin and the Forest and Service or Kevin and us from the Forest and Service and things like that. So, that's, that's the thing.
And I will, I will thank the table now for y'all's patience on at least our end. It's, this, I mean, obviously, this grant is brand new to say, it's to the country. This is, y'all are part of the state of Texas. The questions that we're asking, is this allowable? Can we do this? We're having to run the chain of command all the way to the Fed and back down. So, sometimes there certainly are delays and we're figuring out how to do it.
Y'all have always gotten back to us and told us stuff, what Kevin tells us is not exactly what is there.
No, we, we, we have no complaints to Forest and Service at all. I want you guys to know that.
We're just getting tired of that, well, we're talking in circles about this.
And I apologize, I typically don't raise my voice.
I'll raise it all the time. If I was going to apologize for that, we wouldn't be doing any of it, but I'm sorry.
Were there any other equipment or progress or?
No, we answered the question about the DARP deal. What other questions did we have that?
Did you answer the equipment question, anything like that?
I had a question about like, I was saying, yield forward or whatever, and does the equipment have to be put in one certain place or all the time?
The equipment does, within the coordination of who's doing what work where, does not need to necessarily live in a certain spot. What the grant does say is that the areas that are treated can be revisited twice. And so, if you're moving equipment around too much and you touch the piece of the same piece of ground too often, we might end up changing some of the accomplishments, which again, we're in constant communication. Now, the equipment for the life of the grant does need to be doing things that are in the name of wildfire mitigation. After that, sales equipment, right?
Just got to keep the record maintained.
Yep, keeping it clear where that piece of equipment is working. Y'all's accomplishments do say, I mean, pretty much treating every single square mile of county road, right? Which I'm picturing that in my mind. That's a lot of work, right? It's good work and it's great work.
It ain't going to happen.
But it's a lot of work. And so, to that point, let's not wait till the end of, you know, four and a half years to make from now to say, oh, well, there's, if there's a really good reason that a certain section can't be treated, let's talk about it. Let's, let's put it in writing and that way, when it's four and a half years from now, the feds don't come asking saying, well, hasn't this been done? You can say, oh, well, we talked about this three years ago and this is the modification that was made to represent that. Small modifications, understandable, especially when it comes to every single mile of county roads. Now, large modifications, when it really, when it really comes to changing the intent, there might be some larger issues with justification. If there's some good reasons and we have this clear communication about it, we can work that out together.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's something we need to, we need to look at as far as modifying that because, again, it was our first time at the BAT with this grant and then we had Langford, you know, rolled it up and we approved it. I mean, I can't, I can't say I didn't approve it, but then, you know, after you, it's kind of like after you buy that shoe that feels pretty good in the, you know, in the store and then you're actually wearing it on a run, it's like, well, it didn't quite make what I need to do. So, and that's kind of where we're at, you know?
There have been, of course, already, we've had modifications for the equipment, right? Y'all have Google room in that budget to, things are around and modifications have been made to, with justification of budget and scope of work. So, I'm hoping, you know, that it's working for y'all, that the equipment is going where it needs to go and we're tracking the work that's done. That way, you know, we can report it nice and easy, but at the, it's a lot, there's a lot in there. And that's, we were talking earlier, even this morning, about what maybe parcel level mitigation looks like. It doesn't mean that y'all have to take it, skip through and watch everything inside on those individual parcels. The mitigation of protecting your critical infrastructure and homes from wildfire is not the same thing as RIAW, right?
True.
So, we can't. Clear brush.
Right, right.
But was that along the fence line or?
Actually, you could get it around your houses.
Around the orange.
Anything.
Whatever your legal team says is okay. The example document that we gave you from another county, they don't go anywhere within about 100 feet of the structure, but it's because they're using mulchers and they don't want rocks being thrown. So, whatever equipment y'all are using, make it make sense. Yeah, as long as those rights of entries and the legal teams are happy, yeah, go on private property. Do, we were talking earlier about the water treatment facility coordinating on what work that's happening there.
And around the schools and things like that. That's considered the infrastructure within the grant. Like on your deal, the equipment thing, yes, you can take it over there, but and your guys can run, but it has to be used for the wildfire mitigation. It can't be used for digging the bar ditch out or, I mean, you know, stuff like that. It has to be used for what's in the grant.
But to clear that up, that's not what we were originally told about. We were originally told that the equipment can be used for any purpose, just had to have 10 hours of wildfire mitigation.
Sorry.
Yeah, we, we, we were, we were also originally told, yeah, we were also originally told that this was an upfront grant. There was no, it's not reimbursable. So, that hit us as a big shock when we were trying to figure all this out.
Understandable.
On that, so.
And is that a requirement that we have to operate each piece of equipment 40 hours?
No.
There we go, Jeff, that helps us a lot.
Yeah.
We had to have this meeting.
Anthony can tell you, and for y'all that don't know, that's Anthony. He's the city of Cisco.
And that's.
But that's the reason why we've wanted y'all to sit here or some, Brian or somebody to sit here so we can put them on the phone because we're going to have to have a talk with Langford.
Yeah.
We're going in circles.
No, that's.
Because every time we have this conversation about this crap, that this is the same stuff. It's, well, we're going to do this, we're going to, it's two months down the line. And when we get to September and they push us November, here we go. Where you got, you got twelve months and stuff.
If I remember right, they were talking about March or April was going to have the deal.
My first day was March 12th and they were supposed to have a program by the end of March. And then it was two programs by the end of April and here we are, we still, we don't have nothing.
We're knocking on August, August is dealing. We don't have anything and we basically, and I'll give Commissioner Raines credit for that, with the I-Work's utilization, we wound up not needing them to figure out what we need to be able to document our work. Because at the end of the day, and we've already had this discussion, you and I've had it and the commissioners have had it, you know, if it's not documented, it didn't happen. You can go up there and say, but they'll look, look all the way down this road and they go, that looks great, but you didn't document it.
It's the same thing and I don't want to rehash all this stuff. I don't want to use bad words, but the same thing with mowing the grass and when I was talking to Philip, my, Philip even sent the pictures of Brian and said, hell, there ain't no brush. There's coastal fields on both sides. I'm mowing the damn Johnson grass and that can't be counted as mitigation. What are you going, else are you going to cut on that 10 miles of road? That's all it is.
But that's what Kevin said, no, that's not.
Yeah, you can count it as pre-mitigation or you can count it as this or you can count it as that, but you can't count it as true mitigation because the mitigation crew didn't touch it. Well, shit, they're all, we're all county employees. If I mow or he mows, who makes any difference? It gets mowed.
I think one of the things I love about wildfire community preparedness, just as a plug, is that so much is already happening that either meets the definition of community wildfire preparedness or just with a single step further is going to get you there.
Oh, yeah.
Whether it's on individual home lots, whether it's around county, city buildings, whether it's along those roadways, there is so much that is almost there or is there. We're just not thinking about it as wildfire mitigation. And that's, I think, let's just have to get to that one step further sometime before we're going to be there. So, there's also the language about, this is the place for it, the other part of your contractual budget is regarding a platform for risk analysis. And I don't know what they had in mind, but I know you and Brian have looked at, we have a platform called the Texas Wildfire Risk Assessment Portal.
Yeah, it is.
And it, of course, this government is open to the public and it does high-level risk assessment with lots of different factors. And it's free of charge from the state government.
Well, I'd love to hear that because I'm a parent of the state, so.
That's what we're paying you. Free of charge.
I'd like to see the state stepping up something without giving my life up with your offer, sir. No, not, present company excluded.
Sure.
Talking about all the other stuff that they're making us do. What other questions do we have for the Forest Service that I know they've got places to be and?
That's it. I'm just trying to get us past this stalemate of two months down the line, two months down the line, two months down the line.
I don't, I didn't hear anything that Kerry said that keeps us doing.
And I'll, I'll tell you straight up, Dallin is the one that said, why are y'all sending your data? Dallin Stock, which is the guy from I-Work, why are you sending your data somewhere else? He said, because I'm telling you, you're fixing to get in trouble when you start off-site and to third-party contractors that y'all don't have no control of. You're sending all of your data.
And we told Kevin over and over and over, if it's not physically economical to keep this going, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, and that's what he said, look at Arc. He said, that's what everybody uses. That's why it's got to be on for us to download it into our system. He said, look at that. He said, because I think you're going to get out of a lot cheaper if you just do it yourself.
And I work for those free trainings, as many as you want, anytime you want.
Well, and I mean, we need to be, we need to be cost-effective with the money that we're getting from the government that's flowing through the Forest Service. But at the end of the day, if that, if that special edition Cadillac would do a better job doing what we're doing, then, then let's pay the money for it. But if it's not, and what we've got, you know, the, you know, the Kia that we're using or whatever brand you want to put in there, does a better job and it gets it done, then let's do it for a cheaper deal because then we've got, we have uses for this other deal because the other thing is, and you've probably already heard all this, is that none of the, it was like if you had somebody 15 bucks an hour, they were 15 bucks an hour for five years. There's no cost of living, there's no nothing, there's no help you can give them, there's whatever, you know, and that's, that's not feasible in today's job market. We're having problems getting people to take a job.
So, the, I know there was a question, and maybe it's the last thing I say, but so your, the supercipient contract that you, Bruce and Brian sat down and looked at, that is your name on it, right? That is the applicant information on this, this is the original application, applicant is y'all, Eastland County. Now, Langford is noted as a cooperator officially, but it is, our contract is with y'all. The application has your name on it. So, whatever sort of contractual versus supply changes that have to happen through those, but we're here to support, so.
Well, we want, we want all of it to be a success. That's, that's the end goal is we want this to all work and flow freely that if, a year from now, somebody else gets it, they ought to be able to pick up the phone, call Philip and say, how are you doing this and what can we do to help? And that should be the goal. That is not necessarily the goal when you've got Kevin on the phone, but anyway.
So, what she's saying, we don't have to use Kevin.
No, no, I know what she's saying. Correct me, I, I understand that. I'm, I'm, but that, I mean, I just don't understand why that shouldn't be everybody's goal is to make this a success for everybody, make it as easy and functional as possible.
Well, and Rob makes a good point. I mean, you want to be able to come along, I'd have loved to have been the second round where I could have called the first round guys and said, well, hey, what did y'all do with this deal? You know, because even, even that, we're, I mean, we're having problems keeping the equipment going because we bid the equipment like we normally bid equipment and then, you know, the lowest vendor wound up, may not, may not have the best stuff. So, now, we've got stuff that's broke down and now we're going into, you know, having to reach into other funds to try to repair the equipment so that we can meet our goals, you know, and it's, it's, there's a whole lot of, you guys know, there's a whole lot of moving parts here, you know, when you're talking about trying to hit these goals and then, you know, the weather had cooperated with this, you know, with the flooding that we've had, you know, that we've had to deal with. So, you guys have been, and I'm not just saying it because y'all are here, you guys have been great to work with and if you guys will come back, I'll buy all y'all's lines.
If they can't come back, can you just give them money?
Yeah. Write them a hot check.
I have to tell you, I just recently reached out my annual ethics training, and that is not allowed.
Okay. Your ones is not, getting us anything in particular, because you guys were helpful to begin with. Uh, Brian, is there anything else that you think you can throw in, or any of the other guys?
No, like Carrie's saying, you know, we're all, we're here for y'all, uh, you know, we wanna make sure everything gets done the way it needs to get done, and, you know, answer any questions, or phone calls, or anything like that, we're always free and available. Um, just, uh, you know, always come to us whenever you need anything.
Yeah. Carrie, grab one of my cards for you, Lee. I'd love for you to...
Can I have one?
No.
I knew that answer.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, so, so much. All right. Gotta be careful going back.
Thank you.
Come, come back by when you're coming through. Philip, where are you going?
Oh, he didn't even say?
You got agenda, Adam.
You're on the agenda.
Yeah.
I thought that was it.
Discuss and consider moving the community wildfire defense grant payroll budget to operating budget lines.
Did you give me a budget amendment?
Well, I thought it was a long time ago.
No. Okay, so, uh, there's a copy of his budget.
We gotta move money to pay deals, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Five hundred or so, I don't remember what it was.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, you had that, because, I mean, that was a deal that came out of it. I thought it was...
Oh, this is, oh, that's your...
I didn't know what you needed, but we're, we're trying to pay the bills, get the parts.
If we didn't, can't make a PO or anything.
Yeah.
We were negative, so.
So what I looked at is on, and I think I highlighted it on everybody's, um, in group help, there's forty-four thousand, five hundred forty-eight, sixty-six left. I calculated that we'll need around nine thousand to finish the fiscal year. So, there's about thirty-five thousand to be moved from group help, and if, if the court would just give me permission to move budget from group help, and then I can get with Philip, and we can kind of distribute it where he thinks he needs it.
You're saying health?
Health.
We gotta add some for, uh, health.
Repair.
I kept thinking you said health.
Oh, health?
Yeah, for group help, I was like, where is that? I can really have more in that budget.
Yeah, we can get more in that budget.
It's two zero, two zero, zero, correct?
Yes, two zero, two zero, zero. Did you hear that? There's about thirty-five thousand in here, to a budget, yeah. And we're still negative on the interest, but at the end of the fiscal year, we'll figure out where that can be moved from also.
So I need a motion on that, Mr. Rude?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, move the thirty-five thousand.
Motion.
Okay, motion, uh, post it, sign, motion carries.
Move the thirty-five thousand, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you'll even, too, because I'm only on the road.
Okay.
I, discussing, consider moving the municipal fees for twenty-twenty-six, sure.
Same as they've been for the last couple of years, they didn't change.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Maxwell, who's a favor, say aye. Post it, sign. Motion carries. Jay, request to move funds within the county clerk management fund and supervisor warning related payrolls. I thought we already discussed this, but we didn't take action. Okay. That's right, I remember, I remember he was, he was, he was killing it.
Yeah, yeah. Salary's about one dollar more an hour, out of the county records.
Okay, Robert, since you were the killer last time, I expect a, uh...
I'll wait.
All right, motion by Mr. Rains, second by Mr. Maxwell, who's a favor, say aye. Oh, same sign. First gen though, again, request to expand county clerk management funds for credit card readers.
Okay, so you guys have already authorized me to purchase some readers out of my records management, but as we're starting to go live with those...
Those were for glasses. Those were for reading glasses.
Yeah. They work. Anyway, I need more. So I need four more, and that is, she gave me fifty percent discount at Tyler Technologies, so I'm only having to pay for two, so four.
Yeah, it's only because the other two probably don't work.
They do work. They do work. So, anyway, so the, um, let's, I don't even hear it off the top of my head. Yeah, I know.
That sounds like it's gonna be...
One thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which a thousand fifty-eight of it is for four readers, which is what I paid for, for two readers last time, and the seven hundred and twenty dollars is for maintenance. And then I, going forward, will change my records management budget to reflect the, this additional seven hundred and twenty dollars over one. And where are you going to pay this out, Kevin?
It's not from the Rexman fund.
Yes. It probably came out of computer equipment, but there's not enough money, so would you give me a, a snippet for that also? I will, thanks, thank you. Which is three thirty-eight, right? Three five six. Equipment, I'm sorry, yes.
Next month, uh, kind of circling back, next month, I'd like you, me, and Robert to sit down.
Next month? Is that like next week?
Yeah, not next week, but that month.
Okay.
That starts out next week. Oh, you are? All right.
It's a circle, it's, it's, every, every phone conversation is just like that one a while ago, and you, you can't, you can't talk to him, and he just starts talking in circles, and this stuff of wanting to put, and he just mentioned us and the city, start... No, he's wanting Jasper on there, too. He wants all three of them that what they're representing to report to the same deal, to, at, and charge us all the same cost.
Yeah, times the, the rest of the entities. Yeah, no, no. There's that, there's no reason for us to reinvent the wheel.
No.
And, 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 but, no, if you're, if, if Robert's available, I... Yeah, I don't, I don't have any desire to, Kevin. I mean, at this point in time, I think, I think we need to have that conversation with Judy, and just say, look, you know, we, we're getting conflicting information, and, and not only, if, if it's not conflicting, it's just, you know, I mean, that's, it's just filler talk, you know? What's, what was the old, uh, deal during the election? It's just a word salad.
Yeah.
Okay, you're back.
So just let me...
Yeah.
I don't care.
Just set it up for your convenience.
You're talking about next week?
Next week.
I thought you were gone.
This week.
Oh, okay.
It's just here.
You're gone in August?
If you'll set the meeting up in August.
You'll be there for September.
What? It's better my, my mouth.
All right, um, now, Robert doesn't have to make this motion, somebody else can make it, because he's already, he's already bailed her out.
I'm late.
Motion by Mr. Rains, second by Mr. Maxwell, who's a favor, say aye. Post it, sign, motion carries. Okay, it holds not, Kathy, so, uh, discussing, consider appointing Eastern County President District Chief Appraiser Randy Clark Esquire as a designated option and authorize him to calculate the no new revenue rate, voter approval rate, and demandless rate, and prior year's actual collection rate for the twenty-twenty-five tax year.
And if this sounds familiar, it is, because on the last agenda, I put twenty-two-four tax year, and it's for the twenty-twenty-five tax year, so.
Then, then he just came up there and marked it out, and started over. Anyway.
I might.
Motion by Mr. Rains, second by Mr. Maxwell, who's a favor, say aye.
I guess that's why we have to have it, remember?
No, he's waiting on information from the com caller on the rolling stock. He emailed the judge and I last week, and told us that. So as soon as he has that, we'll have it. No, I asked if that was going to open it up, and they told me no. If you'll just give it to me, I signed it, and when I air them.
Hey, uh, when we, right after we adjourned, I talked to you, Christine, I just had one question.
Yes, and I have something for you, Sonny, on your tab.
Yeah. Discuss and consider taking action on a private waiver for contractors, so proprietary for Trent Yodra?
Yudra.
Yudra, Brandon Nelson, and Blake McClure, they contracted a straight-line construction and do work in multiple county offices. What, what kind of work are they doing?
Construction. Uh, just various different...
Building cabinets?
Exactly.
I'm sorry, what is it, like building, like stepping inside a building?
Uh...
They build my model.
My cabinet. Yeah, they did my, my cabinet, too. It's...
I'm late. All right, motion by Mr. Rains, by Mr. Wilson, who's a favor, say aye. All right. Post it, same sign. Motion carries.
I'll just take that out, hold to the fact of what we're talking about.
But yeah, you can wave it every time.
You can wave it every time.
For instance, take care of it.
Well, and I think, too, in a small county, it's harder than in larger counties with bigger businesses, and they can carry more.
Okay, discussing, discussing, consider proving to the sheriff's department.
Uh, Judge, this is a transfer, not a donation. It's just a transfer of...
Okay. Either. Either way. Timmy had a bunch of stuff. What?
Do you want more?
Not, not really. I mean, I can, if we need to, I'll, I'll store it, but...
I like the motion.
It's more for elders and... All right, motion to transfer by Mr. Rains, second by Mr. Rude. Okay, well, hey, here we're making those, I think they're doing it.
He's the one that...
Uh, did you, did you just sit there and do it? Aye. Ask, budget discussions, either we already done that.
Yes, I do have one change.
And I have your next change, before we can do it next time.
We file the post on August the eleventh, so we can do it next time. Three 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 zero, twenty thousand, that is the state's salary for the judge's salary, and that is increasing over twenty-five thousand to thirty-one thousand five hundred.
Okay, so two thousand is that? You're on page one?
Mm-hmm. On the actual budget, one sheet, yes.
And it's line out of, in the, to that twenty thousand, and it's changing to twenty-five thousand?
Thirty-one thousand five hundred. It's tied to the district's salary.
So you get a pay raise, too? Huh? Yeah, I saw mine. Had gone.
Well... I'll have to start muttering myself. Shelby, Shelby, mute, bitch. Okay, what else?
And that's it, we've gone over the fact that, um, we're going to the other league.